The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by the Careless Insurance Agency at www dot de careless insurance agency dot com and by Avidia Bank at www dot avidia bank dot com.
My name is Paulus Public Karen to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Pian Lee, Chairman of the Legal Affairs Committee. I'm joined this evening by the second member of Legal Affairs, Mr. Robert Tossi, Ward One Councillor, and the Ward Two Councillor, Pauline Cormier. I will read into the record. This is petition forty-five dash twenty-four. Want to choose the Regional Planning Commission, Glenn Eaton, Executive Director, request that the following petition to amend the limits to zoning ordinance and zoning map to create an MBTA multifamily overlay district and request that you place it on the city council agenda, including with this letter, our proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance and a map depicting the location of the proposed overlay district. As previously agreed, the City of Leominster will be responsible for the public notification required for this zoning amendment. The MRPC began working with Leominster's Housing Committee in November of two thousand twenty-three to design a district that would meet the requirements of section three A of chapter forty A while protecting and promoting the city's sound development. After investigating multiple areas throughout Leominster and considering various configurations, the committee and the staff of the MRPC agreed that this proposal will meet the requirements of the law in a master best and a manner best suited to the unique conditions in the north Leominster neighborhood. This was first appeared on our agenda back on April twenty-second, and we held a public hearing on June tenth, if we will be holding on the hearing on June tenth at six P M. I notice we do have a quorum this evening, so I'm required to read the following, per order of the Legal Affairs Committee Chairman. This notice of the City Council Committee of the whole meeting is posted in the event that a quorum of the City Council is present at this standing committee meeting. If less than a quorum of the City Council is present, no committee of the whole meeting shall take place. If a quorum is present, any such meeting shall be restricted to the standing committee agenda, items listed above. With that, it's my pleasure to turn this meeting over to Mr. Joseph Boyle of Montufer Regional Planning Commission and his associate Karen.
Boss.
Boss, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And whatever you're ready to begin, Joseph.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Councillors, Members of the public for coming tonight. I am here tonight to discuss the MBTA Communities Act and the proposal we have for Leominster to comply with the act. As you all know, there is a housing crisis in Leominster and there's a housing crisis in Massachusetts. Massachusetts has among the highest and fastest growing home prices and rents of any state in the nation. There was a study came out recently which concluded that the Worcester County metro area has the third most competitive rental market in the country as of two thousand twenty-four. Looking at a combination of the availability of units, the availability of units per hundred thousand population, as well as the rate of rent increases, we came in, we, Worcester County Metro Area, came in third in the country. To put that in perspective, Greater Boston is twelve. So we have a serious housing shortage, serious multifamily rental housing shortage in north central Massachusetts. And it's resulting in rising financial pressures for low and middle income families. It's greatly enhancing the homelessness problem. It is, housing issues are now the primary driver of homelessness in the Commonwealth. And it is driving people out of Massachusetts and out of Leominster with serious implications for our future economic development. And the cause of this, it's driven by a supply shortage. These are marked, the market conditions are such that demand greatly exceeds the supply because the supply has been cramped for so long. And when supply and demand are out of whack, you end up with spiking crisis. So in response to this, the state legislature passed the MBTA Communities Act as an amendment to the Economic Bond Bill in two thousand twenty-one. Now, this is an amendment to the chapter forty, the zoning act. Chapter forty A, the zoning act, is the law that passed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that gives local communities like Leominster the power to have zoning. So they amended that grant of zoning authority in this bill in order to address the housing shortage, particularly the shortage of rental housing, and address it in a way that is transit oriented in order to protect communities from fiscal impacts and the traffic impacts. Other states have also recognized that they have serious housing shortages, particularly rental and multifamily housing shortages, and their strategy to address that, California, Oregon, Washington, and also Vermont, they have eliminated single family only zoning, whatever used to be a single family zone. You can now build up to four units. Commonwealth of Massachusetts selected what I think is a wiser direction. That auto-oriented suburban development where the single family zones, they already have traffic problems. They already have fiscal problems with the development not paying for itself. Simply increasing the number of units in that same pattern of development is just going to make the traffic problem worse. So instead, Commonwealth of Massachusetts is promoting development around transit centers in order to maximize the transit usage for commuters and minimize the traffic impacts of this additional housing development. A hundred and seventy-seven of Massachusetts' three hundred and fifty-one communities are covered by this law, and in total, they are mandated to zone for almost exactly two hundred and ninety-seven thousand units. Leominster's requirement is approximately one percent of that total. I wanted, I hope you all keep that in mind, a hundred and seventy-six other communities are required to zone for about two hundred and ninety-five thousand units. Now, a lot of people look at this law and they think about the implications of it on their local community, as they should. I just hope that the essence that I'm trying to convey here is that, yes, the changes that are made in Leominster and the units that are zoned for in Leominster, we have to think about how the effect that those will have on town. But I do hope you keep in mind the effect of two hundred and ninety-five thousand additional units being zoned for by these other communities would, what that can do to address the housing crisis can also have positive impact on your town. And your rezoning that you're responsible for, in a sense, is your ante into that statewide game of addressing housing shortage. So what are the requirements? Communities covered by the MBTA Communities Act need to provide at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted by right rather than by special permit. Multifamily housing shall have no age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. Now, what's a district of reasonable size? That, the specifics vary by the community type. And Leominster is an MBTA commuter rail community, and the district needs to have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre, subject to any further limitations by wetlands and septic codes. Okay? What is fifteen units per acre? People hear that number and it's not immediately something that they can picture in their head the way they can picture ten feet. They think of an acre, try to picture what that is, then they try to picture fifteen units. Fifteen units per acre, how else can you read this? Okay. These are different types of houses. These are pre-standing single family homes. And on the other end, we have mid-rise apartment buildings that one might find in the center of a larger city. There has been a lot of this built over the last forty years, and there has been a lot of this built over the last forty years. But everything in between that has, to a large extent in American development, really fallen off the table. The production of things like duplexes, small court communities, townhouses, triple deckers, four deckers, that's not really been built up. Two families and the small multifamily, what would be called an apartment house, that's what's called missing middle housing. That is generally what, that is commonly built at about fifteen units per acre. So we're not talking about high rise, we're not talking about mid-rise. Examples of fifteen units per acre, a two-family home on just under six thousand square feet, a lot of a hundred feet by about fifty-eight feet with a two-family home on it, works out to fifteen units per acre. So here are some examples you might recognize that are near the north Leominster MBTA station. This cleaners, there are two residential units on the second story, so this, and it's on a lot of between five and six thousand square feet. This is an example of fifteen units per acre. This condo complex, if they're, you know, a larger acre site, multi-acre site, so they build out like this, this is approximately fifteen units per acre. The house on the far right, the White House, that also had an additional unit in it, so that's another two-family at fifteen units per acre. So a couple of other buildings in town that you might recognize, the La Pierre East Apartments, that works out to a hundred and forty-seven units per acre, so we're talking about almost ten times. The Waterway Apartments on Water Street, this is pretty typical of a miller redevelopment project, thirty-three units per acre. It's actually a little bit lower than you see in a lot of mill projects, so that would be about twice the fifty. So what are the specific requirements for Leominster under the law? I said it was a commuter rail community, and some of the, and the requirements vary by community type. There is a minimum size for the district of fifty acres. Forty percent of the land needs to be located, at least forty percent of the district needs to be located within a half mile radius of the north Leominster station. Your unit number, which is based on a percentage of your existing housing units, for commuter rail communities, it's fifteen percent. Your unit number is two thousand eight hundred and ten. And affordable unit requirements shall not exceed ten percent. We'll get to that in a minute. One point I want to make, Leominster is not responsible for production. This is a zoning exercise. Leominster is responsible for rezoning to have one of these districts. What gets built there is not Leominster's, is not one of Leominster's responsibilities under the act. So working with the Housing Committee, we started studies, we studied a number of sites around the city. We started out eliminating right away the single family districts as not being desirable for the purpose, and we looked, you can see, yeah, we're resumed in, this is Nashville Street where the MBTA station is located, so we, our first steps were obviously to look right in the vicinity of the station because forty percent of it needs to be there. And we found the multi-use one district on Nashville Street where the train station is located. This is the lowest hanging fruit. This is, this would be highly desirable. The other ones that are close by, looked at the other MU one district, we looked at this Residence B district here, the industrial, small industrially zoned district across the tracks from it, also the commercial and business B district along Main Street itself. And then a little late in the process, we had the recommendation to take a look at the Whitney Field Mall commercial district. We're going to come back to that later. We also looked at a number of scattered sites around the city. For example, already existing sizable multifamily developments like Liberty Place, different places around the city, we looked at those. And we also looked down here, the far south of the city, the thinking here was that Sterling was looking at MBTA, doing its MBTA zoning here, and we were thinking that there could be some benefits to having the two MBTA zones next to each other to provide a basis for, to support commercial development within the district. We're going to come back to that idea too. But after looking at these districts, getting feedback from the committee, running them through the compliance model to see what they would provide for us in helping us meet the requirements, based on the Housing Committee's recommendations, we eliminated a lot of these. We decided not to go with any of the scattered sites. We decided to only focus on the immediate vicinity of the train station in order to, with a vision of creating a sort of transit village around the MBTA station. So these are the four we chose, the MU one district along Nashville Street, the MU one district along Hamilton and Crawford Streets, the small industrial district around Marshall Street, and the Residence B district that backs up the commercial district on Main Street. So let's take a look at each of these individually. The Nashville Street MU one district is a seventy-two point nine acre site with a unit capacity base. Let me take a moment here to explain what I mean by unit capacity. Commonwealth of Massachusetts provided, provides planners with what's called the compliance model. It's a complicated spreadsheet where you enter in inputs, it analyzes your zoning for you, and produces results for how many units could be developed on that site based on the parameters you enter. The site parameters, including the size and requirements of the MBTN law, but also other zoning, also other parameters in the local zoning to see how much they limit the development. So, oops, what we came, so the MU one districts provide us with a grand total of two thousand six hundred and sixty-five units, an average density between the two districts of sixteen point eight units per acre, which gives us within a hundred and forty-five of our total. That's just the two yellow MU one districts. The RB district, the residential B district, it's a twenty-seven acre site with a unit capacity of four hundred and twenty-eight units. Paired with the final two MU one districts, the final unit capacity is met, and they also recommended including the industrial district. Why was the industrial district included? Basically because it wasn't taken out. But I'll think of the process I described, looked at all of the districts that were in the immediate vicinity and met all of the requirements, and examined all of those, and then that included the RB and the commercial districts right along Main Street. So if, here, if I go back a little, you can see that it makes a, if you look at the whole thing. With these two included, it produced one entire contiguous district. There are continu, there are requirements for the district being contiguous, which are boring and complicated, but they do, the important part for tonight is that they do constrain us a bit in terms of being able to break it up into multiple different pieces.
Are you saying that the industrial district is necessary to meet compliance?
I don't believe the industrial district is necessary to meet compliance. Based on our analysis of the, running it through the compliance model, we get the total unit number without including the industrial district. It's a little bit of an additional margin that it provides, but no, we get to the total at the, with the two MU ones and the RB. Yeah, this is, this is an important issue that we're going to, we'll leave.
If you, if you dropped the units per acre to the minimum fifteen, can you comply with those three processes?
No. When we ran the compliance model with a maximum of fifteen, maximum density of fifteen, we were below, we were below the total. The, we'll get to, we'll get to this in a minute when I get into the, into some of highlights of the bylaw itself rather than the map, but the, the bylaw sets a maximum density in this overlay district at twenty units per acre. That is, thinking of the density of a, of a development site, of the lot itself, twenty units per acre. The requirement of the law is fifteen units in each district. Now, the district contains some land you can't build on, that, and so in order to get the districts to hit the minimum requirement of fifteen, we set it a little, we set it a little over fifteen to get to that net so that it would comply. At, at fifteen, it would be, it would be a little under compliance and we'd have to have a larger area.
Could the industrial zone be that? Add in the industrial?
I do not have the answer on that in my head. I'm leaning no. I'm thinking there's, there is a reason that it was included. We are, we can go back and look at that to see if we set, if we drop that maximum from twenty, including all of the ones that are in there, can, can we meet it? And I can also, and we can also look at even without the industrial, how low that could go and still meet it. We wanted to leave, you know, it, I wouldn't recommend designing the law to hit the number exactly on the nose in case we send it to the state, they find something that we didn't, we might want to leave a little bit of a margin. The RB district, I was discussing, it needs, paired with the two MU one districts, vital capacity is met, as the, as the, or, as the point is. The industrial district, if we just had industrial and the two MU ones, it would, it would fall just short of the twenty-five to meet compliance. With the RB included, yeah, compliance is met. Okay, the BB and the commercial zones along Main Street. We originally included these in the districts that we looked at, thinking of one big north Leominster overlay district, a vision of the north Leominster, the commercial core of north Leominster being the heart of the neighborhood, the heart of the transit district, promoting economic, the housing, serving as a source to promote economic development along that district, looking at, it's, whereas now, it is large, it is mostly one store, almost entirely one-story buildings with commercial there, a vision of building there with still, still businesses there, ideally at a higher level of square footage of commercial space with residents above. The Housing Committee was certainly on board with that vision, but they had serious concerns about, you're all, I'm sorry, you're all familiar with the traffic issues that are up there, and the, having developments where the residents, multifamily developments where the residents are, the driveways are going directly out onto Main Street could be, could be a problem. So they wanted to, they were worried about housing directly on Main Street there and wanted at least to maintain the special permit authority for housing or mixed use proposals on Main Street itself. So we took the commercial and the BB out of the district based on their recommendation. Now, the Whitney Field Mall, once again, the Housing Committee as well as the MRSPC thinks that the vision of redevelopment through the adding housing into the declining regional mall area, that's something that has worked in a lot of communities. They brought back their, I mean, Whitney Field isn't as dead as a lot of malls. They brought back their dead malls by turning them into mixed use, a lot of mixed use mini neighborhoods with, helping to meet their housing needs, but also boosting their commercial development. We, both we and the Housing Committee were very much on board with that vision, but we don't think that the MBTA Communities Act is the right way to do it. There isn't, there isn't really pedestrian access from this district to the MBTA station, and it's not, oh, it's almost entirely outside of the half mile radius. So as a planner at the MRPC, I'd be very excited, I hope to someday be talking about the future of the Whitney Field Mall, but it will not, the future of the Whitney Field Mall will probably, we do not recommend that it includes the MBTA district.
Question, what's the maximum amount of units that could be built on Whitney Field Mall? I know there's, it says three thousand, but...
Based on the ordinance as, as written, it has a buildup potential of three thousand sixty-eight. That would be a full teardown and rebuild with just housing at the maximum density scenario, and I, that wouldn't be desirable from either a developer's end or, or the town's end. But it's, a redevelopment plan for the Whitney Field Mall area, I would guess that somewhere between one and two thousand units would be a reasonable ballpark to think could go in.
So that's, that's a number we could use in our models?
It would, we could use those numbers in the models if we needed to lose some other districts, and it could help meet the number requirements. I do need to stress though, there's the forty percent needs to be inside the half mile radius, only a small part of this is within the half mile radius, so...
Sixty percent could be outside.
Yes, sixty percent can be outside the half mile radius. Question, I'm sorry, was there another question?
Yeah, what actually is a unit?
Oh, a residential unit. Well, I, I'm first...
By unit, you don't actually mean like an apartment unit. As you said, the cleaners was, it was two apartments, and then it was the actual cleaning place underneath it, so that meant that ended up being fifteen units or something.
No, that ended up being a density of fifteen units per acre. I was dividing the two units by the lot size.
So a unit actually is like an apartment?
Yes, an apartment, a residential unit, not the, not the storefront unit, but the residential units, a single family only apartments and apartment building. That's, that's what they mean by unit. Yes.
I have a question. I don't really understand how everything has to be within a half mile of the railroad station. Do they think all these people are going to take the train to Boston? I mean, why are they concentrating on a half mile to the railroad station? One conversation is about, we need some apartments, so we need building, and the next conversation is about the railroad station and that little giddy area around the railroad station. I don't see the connection between the two. Just because someone is listening to the railroad station doesn't mean they're going to work in Boston.
No, no, it doesn't mean that they're going to work in Boston. However, there's a much greater possibility. These, part of these units being attractive to people who are already taking commuter rail as well as, you know, having, providing opportunity for people who would like to take the commuter rail and have a, you know, less car-heavy lifestyle.
Big parking lot.
A great big parking lot. Yes, this, yeah, that, we're going to have to talk about parking. There's a... There's a, there is a garage there now.
Excuse me, when you talk about units per acre, you know, are you talking about two-family units, like a duplex or a triple-decker or a four, or are you...
Yes, I'm talking about all of those.
So, so could you go five stories high and, you know, still meet the density but with less, you know, physical ground?
Yes, actually, yeah, that's, this is an issue. The type, the more restrictive the zoning requirements we put on this, on the multifamily zoning in terms of things like height and setback, the larger the zone needs to be. And the more dense that this housing is allowed to be built, the smaller the zone can be. And that's a, that's a, that's directly related to values and character.
It's up to the city.
Yes.
We can determine that.
Yes, yes, we are working for the city of Leominster. We are on a contract to advise and recommend and provide professional planning services to the city of Leominster who will make the decision about their, your MBTA zone.
So, when we talk about, you mentioned the smaller Whitney Field, right? And the number of total build-out would be raising the existing buildings?
Right, right, that 3,068 number that I provided.
Okay, well, aren't we facing basically the same scenario on Nashua Street with the industrials on? I mean, who's gonna tear down a $3 million, $4 million industrial building and it sits on three acres of land? The law paid a demolition, I mean, it, it just doesn't seem to make economic sense. So, and we, we have a very limited amount of industrial here in the city as well. So, anyway, that's just...
Yes. Yet this, this point that we can rezone to a certain area, to a certain area, and it becomes lawful to build multifamily there, that doesn't mean it would necessarily be attractive to somebody to do. A classic example, a classic example of that is places, many urban areas, many of the more urban communities in the city have rezoned areas that are already built out at a fairly high level of density with newer apartment buildings. Now it becomes legal to tear down the five-story, the five-story 20-unit apartment building and put up a six-story 24-unit apartment building. That isn't really gonna be in any developer's interest. But that meets the rezoning requirements of the MBTA Communities Act. I want, I want to make this point very clearly. You are not required to rezone for 2,800 more units. You are required to rezone for 2,800 units. So if on a certain site, there's a 100-unit building and you rezoned and it would never make for economic sense to tear down that building and put up a slightly larger building, you've still met your requirements. In a sense, the units that already exist within this district count towards, towards your responsibility. You don't have to rezone for more.
It's all part of the compliance model, underlying...
Have you done, have you done any, or are you required doing any impact studies on what this is going to have to our school system, to our roads, to our fire department, or police department? You know, these, adding these number of units is just gonna increase North Leominster's traffic problems and property field education facilities.
And those I think are our biggest concerns in Ward 1. So traffic issue, infrastructure issue.
And so why, why did the Commonwealth of Massachusetts make this housing policy an MBTA law that concentrates development near the stations?
And why, right, this is, is an option.
Right. Why, why are we, why are we recommending mostly land within a half-mile of the station? A lot of that is because of this traffic impact consideration. These, maybe building this, the vision of it as a transit village for people populated by a large number of people who take the commuter rail is a way to reduce traffic impacts compared to developing it where everybody would have to drive everywhere. A second way to reduce traffic impacts though, remember, people don't just go to work, they go to other places too. And, and if they can do more, however many of their trips they can do on foot rather than having to drive and park, that's a benefit for the community in terms of lessening the traffic impact. So if we, if we adopt this in a way that promotes transit-oriented development and promotes the development of a walkable district, that can help mitigate the traffic impact level of it. This question about the schools?
Can I, I'm so quick, I'm sorry. So I live in North Leominster, I'm in walking distance to the train station. And when I go out of my house to get to the end of the street, the traffic is so bad, you sit through 8, 12 lights. I see nobody taking the train now. What makes you think that adding more traffic, people are gonna start taking the train? I'm in traffic for a half-hours to go from fire station down to my house.
Yeah, what, what makes me think that people, more people would take it was that they not having to drive through that traffic to get to the train station.
But these people are gonna have cars too. So even if you get half the development that you put up to take the train, you're still adding half more development of cars. And you can't get the traffic through now. Airport roads backed up, they cut down my street to go to airport road. Traffic there is horrible.
Well, yes, this is true. There, there are a lot of other hands than these considerations though. On the other hand, if it was developed, if this was placed somewhere else in the community, there would be, there would still be some percentage of your residents who are taking the MBTA commuter rail to work. They would then all have to drive to the MBTA station. It's, you know, there are, there, there aren't free lunches. There are benefits, but there are, but there are costs. You've identified one with, with this North Leominster Transit Village focus is visiting. That is one, isn't it?
I would like to expand on one of this one. Said, Leominster is not a walking city. You do not walk from here to there, you have to be able to drive. So somebody living in that area is still gonna have to drive to the supermarket, to the pharmacy. You can't get there walking. It's not a walking city. So especially if it's down the end, you're gonna have to build them literally everything they need right there. I mean, and they, and they can't walk from there to the train station. It's, it's not feasible. So the correlation between the MBTA and housing makes zero sense. Zero.
Well, one thing to keep in mind about that is, well, yes, Leominster's not much of a walking city. The downtown, but right now, that's about it. North Leominster is not really a walking neighborhood. Right, as it is now. This is a vision for, for changes. This is, adopting an MBTA Communities Act is going to result in new development patterns. One of those could be to change the character of the North Leominster business district, that commercial and that EV district, to have larger and different amounts, larger amounts and different types of commercial businesses, ones that are, that are taking advantage of the presence of this, this nearby customer base to target them specifically. This is what we see, look, you build a transit-oriented, walkable, pedestrian-oriented, walkable mixed-use district and put, and provide a whole bunch of housing units for sale or for rent. You know who's gonna move into those units? Are people largely, people who want to live in a walkable, mixed-use, transit-oriented district with a less of a car-oriented lifestyle.
Is that the five distance to walk from there to market basket?
Yes, that's, yes, that's, yes, that's what I'm saying. We're, if this much housing were going in within walking distance of this commercial district, we expect that that would have an effect on the commercial district, a positive effect on the commercial district. You'd see more commercial development. And you'd see businesses going in to cater to these people who don't want to have to get in the car and drive to Market Basket. So maybe, more retail, local stores, things like that.
Market Basket would then move into the neighborhood to service these people as adversity on the other side of the highway. They would move into the neighborhood to service these people as you're saying.
I think Market Basket moving into the neighborhood to open up a Market Basket would be unlikely. A giant grocery store like that depends upon having a town-wide or part-of-town-wide customer base, but other...
You, if they wouldn't walk from Whitney Field up to MBTA Transit, then what makes you think they're gonna walk from that area down to Market Basket or to those other businesses?
Okay, once again...
Plus, all you're saying is speculation.
Okay, I'm gonna finish answering his question first and then I'm gonna go on to your question. So no, it is not the expectation that there will be a Market Basket that moves onto a mixed, into the business district. Yeah, yeah, which, but, for example, smaller grocery stores. A, a, yeah, a smaller grocery store in which people could meet some of their shopping needs, make fewer trips per week to Market Basket. Like, in places like Boston, we can talk about a car-free lifestyle. In places like Leominster, transit-oriented development is about a car-light lifestyle. People are still gonna have to do some of their stuff by car. But if they can do some of their stuff that isn't by car, then that's, that's less trips per unit. The, ma'am, you had brought up the question of people, why, people not walking from Whitney Field? Yes.
When, when Whitney Field was being considered, you said there weren't, it wasn't adequate walking.
Whitney Field is on the other side of Route 2. So that's why it doesn't have an adequate pedestrian connection.
The thing is, they put in all brand-new sidewalks all over the city. They have brand-new sidewalks there. And so, to your point, if, if that's the reasoning for not using Whitney Field, then if you're using reasoning for walking to go down into a shop and work, everybody has a car. The old days are gone when one family had a car. If you've got four people in the family that are drivers, they've got four cars. That's really mysterious.
Everybody in the suburban areas has multiple cars per unit. This is true.
Not living in Boston or Cambridge that take MBTA or that live within an area and walk everywhere. That's not real how we live out here.
Yes, that is not how people, that is not particularly common for most people in North Central Massachusetts who are living now in North Central Massachusetts. There are a lot of people moving into this region and we expect that there will be more people moving into the region from the greater Boston area, which are going to impose a lot of these impacts, a lot of these traffic impacts on your community. This is, in one sense, this is a way to manage that growth that we know is coming, one vision of how to handle it.
I just like, I just wanna make everybody aware. I think the legislation when they adopted this, they knew that they'd get a visceral reaction from residents and more than likely elected officials. So they have a stick component, you know, they all carry a stick. So if this isn't adopted, any community that doesn't adopt this by December 31st in our case, will lose the ability to apply for and receive grant money such as MassWorx and other grants that the city has been successful in paying millions and millions regardless for infrastructure projects. So, yeah, you know, it's, it makes it very difficult. Yeah, so, but again, I keep coming to the same point. I mean, we talked, the folks are talking about a village district there, but there's already industrial development, there's houses there. I don't see, I mean, I know that area very well. I don't know where there's a piece of land right now that could accommodate 15 units per acre. Everything's built on it. So we, so in essence, what we're doing is creating an overlay district on top of existing development, which is likely not gonna change.
But they're gonna carry the big stick by the end of the year and then make a decision, if you guys have any decision yet or we have?
No, if the city doesn't, fails to adopt this, but some type of this community, MBTA Community Act, then we will become ineligible for grant money.
So that's what it's really about?
It goes further.
We wanna continue the grant money source.
It goes further. You should also know that the Attorney General of Massachusetts has taken to suing communities and trying to join them to comply with the law.
Has that happened?
It's happened.
There's also, housing authorities will lose their money as well.
Well, so the housing authorities, you know, what, what you've said from the very beginning, going back to the start of your presentation, saying Worcester County and this area was the highest in the state.
Third highest in the country.
Highest of states anywhere, California, I beg to differ, is high, okay? You also mentioned that you are led by 100,000 people as you were describing the city around Worcester County. Leominster is at 50, we're around 50,000.
Forty-three. Forty-three.
Forty-three, okay, thank you. So, one of the things that you talked about was reducing traffic because people aren't gonna use their cars, but they need to be able to park wherever they take the train, if they do. And you also mentioned that the development around the transit center, if it's low-income that's going to be housed in these because of such a shortage and a need, then I don't understand if they're gonna, and have you done a study that these people, when you had it done in other areas, are actually low-income taking the train to go to work?
Okay, that's, okay, this, we're gonna get to this in a minute. We do not expect this to be a low-income district. We expect where this to be built, that the units would be high-end luxury condominiums in order to make the development economically feasible for developers that have to hit relatively high ends. In addition, there is a cap put on how much of an affordability requirement is allowed in this district. We, we will get to this in, in a moment, but...
Mr. Will, if I may?
Yes.
Just to clarify, and, and we, we have the same concerns that you all have. And we know the traffic, we know the situation. But I think what it's, it's important to understand is there's not some developer waiting, chomping at the bit to go in and put 2,000 units in on Nashua Street. This, this, this is, we're not there. There's, there, this is a zoning issue. What the state is mandating is that we zone it so that a developer could come in, could come into the city and say, "This is what I would like to do here." So don't, don't think that, that there's some developer out there because the reality of it is, is there is not enough room and there's not enough of anything. We're, we're doing this just strictly out of zoning. There's not, you know, this time next year, you're not gonna have 2,000 new neighbors in, in, in your neighborhood. So your concerns are the same concerns that we have. There, like I said, there's no, there's nobody here waiting to do this. This is a zoning issue and that's why we're having this tonight to address it.
Leominster's advantage, it's about the grants because the grants help what? We've always had good paved roads, sidewalks that aren't being used that have been put in, you know, whatever they decide, wherever they, they write grants for. That's, that's the truth. Because as said earlier, if, if it's not agreed to, of course, they could sue us, but it's about getting grant money.
No, they, they absolutely, they will sue us.
I, I told you, but I'm talking about grants. We've gone way beyond traffic and all this other stuff. Higher, higher apartment pricing and stuff like that. Because you still have 10% low-income no matter anybody's driving. That's a state law, right?
It is not. It is not. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to, no, you do not have to. I'm gonna get to the affordability question in a moment and I think you'll be interested, it's, it was a surprise actually when they passed the law. So, please let me ask? Yes, sir.
Listen, obviously, most of these people have concerns relative to where it's located, right, they're going one. We know the law requires 60% to be within a half-mile.
Yes.
So if we said, if we got creative and said, okay, we're gonna take the other 40%? Is it 40?
It's 40, it's the other way around.
Oh, 40 and 60? So we took the other, the other 60, so, thank you, Constancy Lee. And we, and parked, let's say, plunked it down on Central Street where we have Central Village South, which is a large, pretty dense housing project right now. And we, we created features, I know the last time we had, we talked about having common areas and commercial areas on the first level. areas and commercial areas on the first level as part of this overlay, which would help us ensure a more quality construction project. Could we tempt, if, you know, worst came to worst, if a developer took and tore down Central Village South, I know people live there, that provides housing, but could we potentially include that so not all this, all this burden is on North Leominster?
It, it is an option. The, this, these types of conversations took place in the Housing Committee. And based on the trade-offs, they were more favored, they were recommending a train station-focused district to maximize the, to maximize the pedestrian, the people who had quality pedestrian access in order to address the traffic issue.
But we, as the people who voted on this, have to take into account constituents who we're hearing loud and clear from. And to make them suffer the entire burden of this, I'm not sure is entirely fair.
Okay. Yep, that, that, yes, this is the sort of decision that the planners can't make.
All right. Hey, by the way, can I just confirm? Because I, I think you did the night we first met. We can require that the first level of these constructions, we have common areas or commercial areas or some mix of those different things?
We have looked closely into this. A community can meet up to 25% of its unit mandate, not in a multifamily overlay zone, but in a mixed-use overlay zone, which requires commercial on the first floor. The drawbacks on that are, your land area of that mixed-use overlay district doesn't count towards your land area requirement, you don't have to worry about that. Leominster is way over its land area requirement. The other drawback is you can only meet 25% of your unit total in that district, so you have to put the other 75% somewhere else.
But you can, but-
It's a tool. Yes. It's not a question of, no, we cannot allow in the multifamily overlay district, we cannot require first-floor commercial. It's rather, they've allowed a, this other type of district to meet some of the need.
Okay. Thank you.
Here's a question, is I keep hearing the word "build," "build, build, build," but then on the, the, the slide that you showed, that showed the Hamlet Street area and then the two other areas on the other end, the just, you know, industri- industrial areas included, you say that means the zone or the area space. So my question is, because you keep saying "build," while I keep hearing as a developer and building, I keep seeing trucks, more buildings and cars coming in, but then I see the slide that said that there's an X amount of numbers, there's houses that are already there that fit the requirement. So are you talking about just the space and having it rezoned to meet the zoning and the space-wise area? I'm not saying that you guys are coming in or developers are gonna come in and build anywhere, but this area covers the space that you need?
This area covers the space and it allows the development of the number of units that Leominster has to allow.
It needed more units to be built, because right, what everyone is saying is there's nowhere for housing to be built right now in that area. So, heaven forbid, she's saying, she just said the developer's not waiting by the side to come in and build these houses now. So my question is, is it just to say that we have the space that meets the state's requirement, we rezone this to keep you guys what you want? But there's no way how somebody can come there and build all these spaces, because you're knocking down a $30 million dollar development already-
Yes.
-an industrial building to build a possible $10 million dollar apartment building down the road in five years.
Yes.
No way to say that it's not happening, because a lot of people, that means a lot of businesses and corporations, that's nothing to come in and knock down a 5, $10 million dollar building. To build a building that's gonna reap them $100 million in the next 10, 20, 30 years for an accurate supply. So it's not invalid to think that that's what's gonna happen, for somebody to come in and buy one of those industrial buildings, say, "Well, give you $100,000, you can get the hell out of here, because we're gonna build a building that's gonna bring us half of that every year anyway, or the first five years, we're gonna get half of that back." So that's not, I'm numbers guy, so the numbers make sense, but enough space there and get enough back in your development to put their apartment building there. I'll buy your 5, $10 million dollar building, put up the building that's gonna bring me $50 million in the next 5, 10 years. Easy. The numbers make sense.
And, yeah, did I, there was a story, someone you might have seen in one of the recent Boston Globes, calling out some communities almost were cheating in their M B T A laws by passing M B T A laws that cover areas where it's very unlikely anything will, would ever get built. They rezoned an area that's full of two-year-old, six-story, six-story apartment campus. It, it isn't in any developer's interest to come in and, and do a tear-down and do a rebuild, but they've met their requirements. And this was written in as, these, these communities are cheating, they're, they're, they're not actually gonna be providing it. But I don't, I don't look at it that way. I think that community, this, this law is about making sure that all of the communities are pulling their weight and making their contributions. Now, if communities already are, if they've already got a whole bunch of multifamily already built there, good for them, you know? They have, good, meeting their requirement, they're already meeting a bunch of their requirement, and they only need to meet the rest, and that's the way it should work. I don't think it's cheating. I think that communities that already allow for multifamily and already allow multifamily are going to be less impacted by this than communities that have been very deliberately exclusionary for, for all of this time here. So, yes. If, if we rezone built, already-built areas to allow this multifamily, it produces, it produces the outcome that you're increasing traffic in already-built-up areas where there's traffic. If we rezone and put your, if, and the multifamily district goes like a lot of the smaller towns are doing, on a unbuilt greenfield site out somewhere away from everybody, well, that greatly increases the chance that every single unit that's possible to build, that, that's being zoned for, will be built, because you got a greenfield site, you don't have to do demo, and you can just build. So, yeah, these are all trade-offs. Redeve- a redevelopment model for an overlay district versus a new development model for an overlay district, they all come with pluses and minuses.
So when we started this process, we as an organization, we're against it. Out of our 22 communities, 17 are rural. Some have no water, no sewer, how are we gonna possibly do this? So, you know, we, we pushed back to the state and we were told, "You have to do this, this is a mandate. You don't have to build it, just zone for it. You don't have to build it, just zone for it." So these overlay districts are put on top of your existing zoning so that the existing zoning still works. You can still have that existing zoning, the overlay district just comes on and gives another option. So you're not losing what you already have, it's just adding another layer.
Okay.
I, I see us losing what we already have. You live in a residential town, and this would allow somebody to come in and put in however big they want, apartment building, right in our residence aid. We've been living in the same house in North Leominster for 60 years. It's a wonderful, wonderful, quiet place, there were a lot of families, a good place to raise your kids. Everybody knew everybody, life was good. And somebody can come in and wipe out all the work that Leominster has done to have a lovely community where people get along. And to tell you the truth, I don't think you have a grocery shop, because you seem to be known as a grocery shop, and walk home with your groceries out of the garden. But you have to have a car.
Okay. I think he was thinking like a, like a little bodega, or like a-
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know how many of you have lived in a city larger than Leominster, but let's just say that there are walkable places in this world where people live at, there's levels of density of commercial and residential development where they do a lot more on foot than people who live in single-family homes and spur of the earth. It's, uh, North Leominster would, is never gonna be like a Back Bay and a North End in Boston, but it can be, it, it can have more done on foot than, people can do, it can be a district where people do more on foot than the people who are living in the Leominster R A district right now are able to do.
Well, I did, I lived in East Boston.
Oh, good.
And you would have to walk, but you, you could walk, benefit, you could walk, but the reason you could walk is because you'd be sitting in traffic for two and a half hours trying to get to the end of your street. So, I mean, so my, my thing goes back to the traffic thing. More people come, more traffic. And like this lady said, if you do walk to Market Basket and shop, good luck crossing that road, because on Route 2, people don't stop there, those, you'd be a speedball. It's pretty much the truth.
Yeah, I, I, I wanna get this point across. This, talking about walkability, this is not a, this is not entirely black and white. It's not just the island of Manhattan versus, versus Sterling. There is in-between. There are places where people walk, walk less than people living in the Leominster R A districts, but aren't, it's not like living in Greenwich Village, where you're doing almost all of your actions on foot. This slide is about an overlay district. Basically, the way an overlay district works, it's over, we draw it over the existing zoning, it applies changes in a defined area which aren't desired in other areas in the same zoning. So, for example, we're proposing that this multifamily overlay district lay over some M U 1 zones. There are other M U 1 zones where we don't want to allow multifamily housing by right. So instead of changing the zoning code to allow multifamily housing by right in the M U 1 zone, we draw this overlay district, and it only applies underneath the overlay district. Now, you do this, overlay districts are used when you wanna apply a rule to a specific area which are not desired in other areas with the same zoning. Think of, a lot of communities here have water supply protection overlay districts. So they've got their zoning, and in this residential district, you need 30,000 square feet, and in this commercial district, you need 10,000 square feet. But they draw a shape that covers several zones, covers part of the residential zone and part of the commercial zone, and in that zone, you need two acres for anything. Doesn't matter what the underlying zoning district is, but that is the, they, they draw that overlay zone to apply that lot size to that area. It can be done to apply additional regulations where there is extra protection, or it can be done here to provide additional opportunities, additional rights to landowners they can have. So the underlying zoning, a lot, it remains in place. Okay? So the rules for what has to be there remains in place, except for whatever change is specified in the overlay district, in this case, allowing multifamily housing by right. So, the important part of this from a public policy perspective is, no, none of your industrial businesses that are being, having an overlay district, that host over them are losing any of their rights to operate their businesses or expand their businesses or otherwise. Their rights remain exactly what they were before.
What the residents, was it through our property taxes and things like that? As you say, it allows multifamily and things like that, so the property tax, or it's up, it gives us, how does it change for us? Is there a lot of multifamily?
If you've got a, if you have a piece of property which is currently, you're allowed to have one residential unit on it, and it is re-upzoned so that you're now allowed to have multi-residential units on it, that value of that property is going to increase, and that will like, and the, the property taxes on it are likely to increase as well.
You said they are likely to increase, right?
Yes. Property values and therefore taxes of upzoned land generally increases.
So even if I don't upgrade my property or make this multifamily, my property values, still gonna go up, but instead of terrible, make my property tax, or save a piece of property that I already have, before you rezone, it's exactly what you just said?
Yes, that is exactly what I just said.
What's it gonna increase?
What's that?
What's the percentage, what's, what's it gonna increase?
That would really be a lot of speculation. If you're talking about a basic, if you're talking about an unbuilt piece of land, so where you don't have to worry about tear-down, it's going to increase by a higher percentage than if you're talking about where there's an existing home and redeveloping would become possible. If you've got a piece of land that's small enough that you're only allowed one now, and you can only have one additional unit, it's gonna increase less on a percentage basis than if somebody owns a large parcel and it can be redeveloped for many more units. So how much is it likely to go up? It would be a more, it would be a complicated math problem that would depend on the specific conditions of this, of the site.
I mean, you're taxed on the assessed value of your property, not what it potentially could be.
That's a true question, right?
Unless you have, no, nothing's on the land and you can build several units, that'll go up.
You're saying the value of my existing structures is gonna go up, or they're more-
Not the structure, not, the building would be worth exactly the same, that wouldn't change, the value of the land might increase.
The property value could-
The value of the land.
Yeah. I don't think any assessor has dealt with this yet, right? I, I don't know how they would assess that.
Well, hypothetically, if the property tax does increase, what about people that are barely getting by now? Are they gonna end up losing their home because they can't afford the taxes anymore? So isn't it like, you're putting houses up for people, and then people, and with their taxes go up, and are barely getting by, they're gonna lose their houses?
Well, they're gonna, well, in that circumstance, they sell their houses.
I mean, here's a lot of fixed incomes.
In that circumstances, they would be selling their houses. If, 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 and this, I know that this happens in, in communities that see rapidly rising property values, rapidly rising housing costs. If there, if, you know, especially older residents, sometimes the increase in property values makes it difficult for them to stay in their homes. In those circumstances, they'll often sell their homes and take all of the profit they've gained since buying them, however many years ago, when they weren't elderly people on fixed incomes, and in addition, whatever additional increase comes from upzoning this, upzoning this land. Another option, I wanna say, if you're really, if people in Leominster are really concerned that there are incumbent homeowners who are not able to stay in their homes, they've been there for a long time, property taxes are getting high, they're not able to afford them, something that a lot of communities have done that allows people to stay in their homes is accessory dwelling units. That's not what we're here for tonight, we're here for the M B T A law. This issue of rising property values and people not being able to stay in their homes, this is a serious problem that's been going on for years.
Yes.
And the, the adoption of zoning on top of residence, residential zone areas does have the potential to contribute, to put, put a cherry on top of what's already been happening over the past, well, since about 2012, the, the spike in property values. It's already a serious problem. This, what's gone, and this could make it marginally worse if, 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 if this is placed on top of R B districts. One thing to keep in mind, this is, the only residence zone district included, included in here is R B, which already allows some apartment uses, uses other than single-family by special purpose.
Okay, so one last, now, be quiet, just, so if they do sell their house, because they can no longer afford their taxes, but all the properties are going up in value, they're not gonna be able to afford to buy another house?
Well, downsizing is also a solution that is, that people who face this problem, I mean, this problem's existed for a long time. The, the, probably elderly couple, they had kids, they bought a three, four, five bedroom house with their kids, now their kids are out, their income is down. Downsizing is, is something that's very common. There's, there are a lot of pressures, financial pressures, by keeping up a house for-
Yes, I understand, but I've seen a lot of that, I used to be a builder, so I've seen a lot of that in Lexington, Massachusetts. Builders who can end development, build houses, property taxes go up, people next door couldn't afford it anymore, they end up losing their house, their house gets taken over, and they're in a nursing home somewhere, and I just don't think it's right. That's just my opinion on that.
Excuse me, this, this, perhaps, Mr. Boyle can finish his question.
Yeah, let's, let's-
There will be questions after. I might just keep this moment alive, but thank you all for your input.
So, I've, I've gone over the map. So the ordinance, it proposes to- So, the ordinance proposes to create this multifamily overlay district. We are allowed, we are proposing a multifamily dwelling, you know, allowed by right, up to 20 units per acre, and then, now, allowed by right. There would still be review of these projects. Leominster has a robust site plan approval ordinance. Triggers include adding 10 parking spaces, increasing an existing parking area by 25%, and, this is a big one, changing the land use category of a lot. All trigger site plan review. So, the construction of multifamily or apartment building on any property which isn't currently a multifamily apartment building would trigger site plan review. What, now, site plan review differs from special permit review. In a special permit application, the planning board is allowed to say yes or no to the project. In a site plan review, the planning board is allowed to condition how the project is designed, how it sits on the property, and change where, where the building's located, where the driveway comes out, the landscape design, different kinds of things, you know, the typical neighborhood impact protective conditions, that are typically covered in the site plan review. So, when this allows multifamily dwellings, it means by right, it means that multifamily dwellings up to 20 units per acre would go through site plan review rather than special permit requirements. Dimensional requirements, encourage walkability, we discussed this. A 10% affordability requirement for projects over 10 units, 12 units, that's the maximum allowed by the state. This is not an affordable housing program. This is envisioned as a market rate housing program. Originally, the original law did not allow a requirement, an affordability requirement. It was lobbying by the communities that compelled them to require it because they, the state didn't want communities adopting very high affordability requirements as a poison pill just to make development impossible. But, the communities, you're all under, you're all under the, subject to the 40B Act, where towns are, cities and towns are supposed to have 10% of their housing stock be affordable housing. Leominster's right about an eight, and the concern from a lot of these towns was that if we do this rezoning and these projects are going to be built, that's going to set us back, we're going to fall behind. So, they pushed and they got the state to allow a 10% affordability requirement.
Would that be raised to 20% though?
No, that's what I'm saying. Oh, wait, there is, there is a rate to do it. It hasn't been done, it's required to do, if you find the ability, if, an economic feasibility analysis to show that a 20% affordability requirement wouldn't actually be a poison pill, and developers would actually be able to do projects and make a reasonable profit while hitting that requirement. We've not done those. Nobody, no one, no one has requested.
Not in our region.
No, no one in the region has requested one. So, it's not an affordable housing program. It is, this law was passed to address problems in the housing market, problems in the housing market that have been created by regulation. It envisions market rate housing. This is what I just said, you want to avoid losing ground. The other issue, the other reason that the Housing Committee was very much in favor of this, they wanted, they were concerned about a future in which high-cost luxury condominiums built in Leominster and are being bought entirely by people coming, selling their 1.5 billion to $3 million homes in greater Boston, and there, this wouldn't actually provide any kind of housing benefit for Leominster. By, their thinking was, including an affordability requirement, it won't just be extremely wealthy people from greater Boston who are able to benefit from this program, from these projects. I had spoken about this before. The MBTA law requires us to meet certain numerical targets, but we are planners. We should plan for places, not numbers. So, we were looking at this place around the MBTA station, looking at North Leominster, and thinking about what passing this law and the build-out likely to result from it would be, and what are the impacts were going to be. And part of the thinking on our end and in front Housing Committee was that using this housing growth to boost the commercial sector along Main Street there would be a valuable economic development goal, help meet some of the city's economic developments. A vibrant neighborhood with retail sector boosted by pedestrians from nearby housing and commuters coming on and off the train. One thing we noticed when we were doing our investigation of this site is that there were virtually almost no uses there currently that take advantage of the presence of a train station in any way. There isn't, there isn't, there are very few residence, residential buildings within walking distance. There aren't really businesses that are catering to the commuters, you know, commuters, you know, commuters from Leominster going out or people coming in. The only ones we saw were the North End Diner and the Pete's Place around the corner. Sometimes we can get off the train and go there. We think there could be a lot more economic vibrancy produced coming out of this planning. One of the proposals in the ordinance that you've seen is a, is a change in the factor requirements. We reduce, your current zoning requires two per unit for any unit. They, for multifamily housing only within this district, we are proposing a switch to a bedroom, number of bedrooms based standard, 1.5 probably, it's 1.5 per unit below three bedrooms and then two per unit above three bedrooms. The purpose, the reason for that, and the reason for limiting it to multifamily housing is, first of all, multifamily housing typically includes smaller units than large, lots of single-family homes. There's likely to be a lot more one and two-bedroom houses among these units than there would be in a single-family subdivision. So, that will reduce the number of cars per unit. The other thing is, with multifamily developments, you can take advantage of economies of scale in providing your parking. The, everybody, all of us who live in single-family homes need to have some extra space in our driveway for guests, deliveries, or whatever, if we want people, if we want them to be in the park on the street. Each and every one of us needs to have a little bit of that extra space, and that extra space is usually not used. If you've got 16 units in one building instead of 16 single-family homes, some of those extra spaces can be shared spaces, and so you end up needing fewer parking spaces overall. That doesn't apply to other uses, so we're only proposing that for multifamily dwellings.
So, we're not anticipating these folks having any company?
We are, we are. We're not, we're not saying don't provide extra, but we're not anticipating all 16 units in this theoretical building to have all of their company come on the same day.
We generally find that when we have under-parking in units, it ends up on-street, right? And then, when you have a parking unit, then it creates empty now.
On this parking question, there is one other topic that the city council might want to take up, and that is arranging with the MBTA to allow the leasing of spaces in the station. You already have a, an ordinance in the zoning that allows off-street parking to be met somewhere else. If the, if the station itself, which we, doesn't seem to be close to capacity, if the station itself can meet the parking needs of development that goes in, that's impervious surface that you don't have to pave near the Nashua River. That's not car, that's keeping extra cars off the street, so.
Mr. Boyle, does the law require, does it have restrictions on parking requirements?
It does not. It does not. It does not, but excessive parking requirements can, that affect the development potential of the properties in the district can reduce the output from the compliance model and get you below your requirements. So, you couldn't have parking requirements that actually make it impossible to build 15 units per acre. You could have high parking requirements and a two-and-a-half-story limit, you wouldn't be able to get to 15 units per acre even if you technically allowed it, and the state would catch that. So, I include...
Directly, there is, there is a sort of restriction. It's going to work in the model.
Right, yeah, yeah. You would really have to, I think you'd really have to try. A community would have to, well, let's see if we can use this as a poison pill in order to, for this to really be on this site. I think. We haven't really tested this one because nobody's really, no communities have really come up with, sure, you can build multifamily housing, but you need five parking spaces per unit. Nobody's tried that yet. All right, I put the dimensional table in here, but by right multifamily, I wanted to point out we are...
So, these are the parameters that we put into compliance model?
Mm-hmm. These numbers that we're getting in these districts, these are based on a maximum height of four stories. They, that was a level, that was the height that the Housing Committee seemed comfortable with. Maybe you want, maybe you'd want to check their work, but, you know, let's keep in mind, if you can go higher with the buildings, you can have a smaller district. If you were to push the, go lower with the buildings, you need to have more later.
So, if we comply with their regulations here, we don't have to comply with their stormwater regulations, say, the maximum per base coverage? There's no amount that would be required?
Not under this rule, but your zoning doesn't, doesn't...
Avoid the state mandates?
Yeah. Your zoning doesn't void the state mandates. So, if you, if, even if you allowed, even if your zoning allows construction that isn't consistent with state mandates, those state mandates could still apply, and that could reduce the development potential of the lots. And as a matter of fact, in the law itself, this is the law that it's...
The compliance, the compliance guidelines.
Yeah, in the guidelines themselves, they say that you have to allow this density of 15 units, comma, subject to the state, like, for the stormwater insurance.
Not withstanding the Wilderness Protection Act, any flood zones, stormwater.
Because right there, you say that, yes, there's no maximum for the appropriate coverage. You could cover this entire thing and be exempt from the state mandate.
It does not exempt you from the state mandate.
There's the idea that there's no maximum.
There's no maximum required under this act.
There's no maximum in Leominster's zoning. Leominster's zoning will not include a maximum. This other, the state storm law regulations, very well equipped, and those state stormwater regulations, imposing that maximum and potentially reducing the development potential of the site does not, is not relevant to us. We would still be compliant if ours, if the zoning sets it at 15 units per acre, even if they can't achieve that, because, even if they can't realistically achieve that because of the stormwater rates.
I know, it sounds janky, right?
It's just one state mandate.
Yeah, like, we have to do this, and you have to comply with wetlands, flood drains, all of that other stuff.
So, yes, I was talking about towns that, I was talking before, that article in The Globe about communities that chose the location of their district in order to minimize the number of new units that would be built by putting it where there were existing...
Good segue, Mr. Boyle. Sorry to interrupt you, but Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Based on his point, Mr. Boyle's point, if it's, this is your committee, you're here, but I would be fascinated if we cut down the amount of acreage that is within, down to the minimum, the 40%, that's within a half a mile of the MBTA station, for example, and we started looking at disparate or scattered, a scattered approach, and I thought of places like, no particular order, Central Village South on Central Street, Leominster, Mohagety, Run, which is on Lawrence Ave, Lawrence Street, Foxwood Condominiums in Ward 1, Riverside Village on Ward 5, and, and also, to continue, that that first-floor commercial and common area space, 25%, be weighted toward the section that's going to be within a half-mile of the MBTA station, making it a better sort of quality, higher quality sort of development within a half-mile radius of the MBTA station. And see what that looks like in terms of trying to lessen the impact to that immediate area, as well as meet our MDA criteria. In some ways, almost, I mean, some of these areas, some of these are, there's nothing particularly wrong with any of these places, but some of them are sort of the cream of the crop housing in the community, and if in fact it was to be replaced, it might not be the worst thing in the world. Does that make any sense, Mr. Chairman?
It certainly does. Is that something that you could plot out for us?
It is something we can plot out. I am going to have to rein in your parade a little bit. I didn't, I didn't come prepared with all the numbers in front of me, but there are requirements for the district being contiguous. You're allowed to have a couple of different districts, but for example, at least one of them needs to be 50%. I believe you need at least one, at least 50% of your zone needs to be in one contiguous district. And there is, and no zone can be less than five acres, I think.
Five.
And there are some other requirements, and so, that, the bottom line is, that might, that will limit our capacity to scatter the sites. It will not eliminate, eliminate the capacity to scatter sites.
Based on what I just gave you, it's not exclusive list, and it's just my idea for the moment, I think with the exception of the 50% rule, which I pump up, what you have to do in that MU1 zone, and I don't know how much that would be, but how much of that MU1 zone, the zones you need to get to the 50%, I think all of these sites are at least five acres, all these other sites.
Okay.
Process.
Yeah, I feel like we, you know, the Housing Committee, see, the thing with the compliance model is, we can't just set up the districts and then cut these parcels in. Our GIS analyst has to do it, so it has to come from there and then in, and it, the model makes it almost impossible to mix and match without doing a whole new compliance model for each.
I understand.
Oh, we can do it, absolutely.
Yeah, it's a lot of work. You get a lot of work to get six votes on this council. I'm going to be honest with you. You know, I'll just speak for myself. I detest this law, okay? I absolutely detest the fact that Boston's going to tell us how to zone our community. I'm sorry, I just don't agree with it. I've been practicing blame you law for a long, for my entire career. Yeah, I just see this as a total encroachment on the local community. We know what's best for Boston, okay? And to suggest, I mean, you know, government always thinks that it has the idea, and that they don't know the unintended consequences of what they do. I mean, what if this resulted in another school? I mean, that grant money, honestly, and I looked at some of the numbers involved here, if this resulted in another school, they could keep that grant money times 20 years, it will make up the cost of another school. And I started to think in those terms, in terms of the actual dollars and cents here. And honestly, you know, I did talk to a couple of developers about, you know, how we could, sort of, you're right, the fact that we permit it or allow it doesn't mean it's going to get built. And I started thinking in those terms. And I don't want to, I want to comply with the law... And I don't want to, I want to comply with the law, but if, if you're going to get my vote, we're going to do it in a very careful, intelligent way that will impact this community the least amount possible. Um, and I also do understand, and have even thought about, you know, sort of developing a union with other communities that have the same problem I have with respect to this law. Um, I know there, the list is growing of communities that are saying no. Um, and before we go down that road, I want to take a hard look, and I think there might be a path where we can maybe make this at least paddle. And I understand all these people's concerns, believe me, I lived there almost my whole life, I know what it's like. I mean, when the mayor ran for his first term, he said if he was mayor, you'd be home by now, okay? That was 30 years ago. Problem still exists in North Leominster, if not worse. That's no dispersion to the mayor. It's just a fact of life that, you know, the way this community was developed, and not having that link off of 190 into North Leon, into New Hampshire, we get all this traffic dumps off of 190, and the state never, again, you know, never planned for. And there was never a way to get that traffic away from North Leominster. And to this day, 30 something years later, there still isn't a way. So those are my concerns. If there's a way, I, I don't want to make you do all this extra work, but to me, this, listening to your presentation, this seems like potentially a win, where if we could sort of take some of this away from North Leominster and potentially put it in places where, I don't know if some developers are going to come along and want to buy all the condos in Central Village itself, just like your example, that other community, and if they do, maybe it ain't the worst thing in the world. But this might be a way for us to sort of make this work.
Yeah, that, those are, we're working for, right, a couple of points I want to make here. First of all, we're working for the city of Leominster to help you meet your requirements under the MBTA law so that you don't suffer consequences from it.
Right.
If Leominster doesn't pass an MBTA law, it will not harm the MRPC, Karen, or myself in any way. Um, you, your community is facing these circumstances, and you have to decide what you want to do about that. And I didn't come here tonight to twist the city council's hearts and tell you you'd better pass this.
No, you, I, I believe you, I appreciate the work that you've done. Um, you know, you've answered a lot of important questions, and you've given us some food for thought, but just sitting here listening tonight, I don't, I'm not sure, you know, I'm sure the Housing Committee worked hard and won with us too, but I'm not so sure that sort of sticking all this burden on North Leominster makes a lot of sense. Uh, based on the possibility at least of sort of spreading and shifting some of this as well as, you know, as you said, I mean, is someone going to tear down Riverside Village and build, build a multifamily? That's a pretty dense area already. St. Bose for Foxwood, St. Bose for Mohagety, those are all pretty dense areas. Fox Meadows, sorry.
Yeah, we had Fox Meadows in there. You can't pick that for a, for a, Riverside Village.
No, you can hurt it, you got it.
Yeah, there are places, there are communities throughout Massachusetts which have taken that approach, and like I was saying earlier, I think it's a perfectly legitimate approach. That wasn't what, that wasn't the feedback we were getting from the Housing Committee.
How much time do we have? How much time do we have to make, make this decision?
There will be other compliance if you don't pass an MBTA law by December 31st. We came in tonight with this, um, uh, this petition which has been submitted to the city council based on the feedback we got so far, which focuses your MBTA district on North Leominster. And as a result of that, we have a large number of people who've come here from North Leominster who say, put it somewhere else. I think it's very possible that if we put it somewhere else, the next time we have a public hearing, we're going to have fewer people from North Leominster coming in and more people from somewhere else coming in with the same message, put it somewhere else.
But it's equity, and it addresses a problem. I mean, you spread the pain, so to speak, right? But it's also is a particular problem, when they passed this law, they didn't think, oh, the MBTA station, Leominster, is in one of the worst traffic places it could possibly be. I mean, that MBTA station is like in a bad spot, right? Um, the train's been there since 1845, okay? Did they understand that when they built the train in 1845? No, they didn't. But the point is, is that this is just a bad collection of circumstances. It is, and it's, it's not going to be good if for some reason or other, you know, all of us looking at this are a little wrong, and they build a lot more housing there than we ever envisioned. I mean, maybe they won't build 2,800 units, maybe they won't build 2,000 units, but if they built 1,500 units there, we got problems. There's no doubt about it, we got problems.
Yeah.
And that's not on my watch.
So, um, as we, so you brought, you brought up the issue of wanting to spread it around to different parts of the city, and you have brought up the existing multifamily developments that already exist. We looked at a number of those, we had also looked at, uh, South Bank of Town on Route 12.
There's sewer down, yeah.
Sort of. Um, is that, should, shouldn't we go back and take another look at that?
Well, the problem there is that, quite honestly, it's a wrong way, so it's not attractive, right? So that's why I didn't mention it frankly.
Well, why not the mall at Whitney Field, why, why can't we put the majority of the housing there?
That's an option.
I mean, it, it already has a restructure there.
So you lock it, you guys want people locked it, why not build some kind of transit or walkway, raccoons over the highway, whatever, whatever. I mean, if you guys want something that connects the neighborhood.
That's usually not worth the money.
But it's not worth the money to you guys, but it's, it's-
Is it worth the money to you to build a, it would probably, it would probably be $7 million project to go over Route Two pedestrians.
That's what I'm saying.
It would be a $7 million project to put a pedestrian crossing over Route Two. If that's what the city of Leominster decides is a valuable-
All of these homeowners who live in that neighborhood, to their property tax that go up over the next 10, 20 years, their property values to go up, people to be homeless, like this guy's saying, they're just telling them to sell their houses and downsize and get out, get out of the way. That's what your explanation wasn't, response to it was. Oh, well, downside, sell your house and get out of the way, basically, for somebody else to move in, is what you said.
That's an issue if it's placed somewhere else's wealth. If we, if this is placed anywhere that's a developed area, that potential of displacement comes, does come up.
What do you feel, these people who have been living next door for 20, 30 years, I would wish why somebody's property, knock out the house that's there, build some five, six family monstrosity, a 15 apartment building, property there, their property tax automatically goes up. Like he says, now the person next to me, and this lady who lives down the street, all their property values go up just by me building one building. Now, all of these people who are building, living on a fixed income, you're telling them all to sell their houses and downsize. Because one person moved in and changed the property value.
No, you're not telling them to go out.
It will, because you just said that it's overlaid under what's already there, a single family now is overlaid with a multi, so if I move in and drop my single or double family home and make it a six, 12 family apartment building, all the values go up automatic around it, don't they?
No, building a building would not make the values go up. Building, I want to make sure that people understand this. Somebody building a multifamily building next to you, that isn't, that doesn't increase the value of your property. It's your, your property being rezoned so that you have potential for further development that would, that would increase the value of the property. But no, having a large multifamily next to you does not increase property.
If somebody built a 12 apartment building next to my house, my single bed, uh, family house, the value would go down.
Exactly.
Nobody would want to live.
Right, it would, right, right. That, what would make, that would tend to make the value of your property go down. Having your, excuse me, having your, um, your own property rezoned so that it could be redeveloped would make the value go up. So there'd be one feature, uh, there'd be one force tending to lower the cost and one force tending to increase the cost.
That would make me want to move to Stone.
That's your right.
So when you sell your house, like something, say you're in a neighborhood, somebody sells their house, and then they do an assessment of their own, we usually go by what that house is valued in the neighborhood. So if somebody, say you're in a neighborhood and people sell their houses for $50,000 less than what it's worth, I mean, it just drops down. Your house values, they go by the area of the neighborhood for taxes, correct? So if I build a house- To comps, to comp, they call it comps, comp for a little bit. Here's the thing, if somebody builds a multifamily apartment building-
Yeah.
-near single family houses, those aren't comps. It's, it's a condo in a multifamily building versus a single family home with its own lot. And so as the, during the, as the assessor is doing your assessment, they, they wouldn't be using that as a comp. So it's, it's a little more complicated than the way you just described, which is everybody at single family all that.
Mr. Boyle, just a second, you know, kind of taking off what Mark, you know, was talking about, it says using existing properties, and you said there was a limit as far as what we could put in a small area because it's not within a half mile.
But, uh, right.
Okay, so if, if that was part of Mark's plan, it puts some of that pressure off of having to have a dense area on the National Street, okay? And if Fox Meadows, Fox Run falls in there, I think you're going to see a large part of that probably go away.
I think, I think some of those properties I suggested, my thought process is, are, you know, the ones to go with the mall is a more complex issue.
Yes.
And there's going to, we're going to have to address that as a community sooner or later, and that obviously is going to involve multi-use zoning. And to the extent that any housing is proposed there, which I'm going to take the long john this eye toward, you know, personally, I'd want to see that from a taxpayer's point of view as senior housing, to get away from, you know, what comes with that type of housing that we'd be talking about, no offense to the Council of Lodge and the Ward One Councilor, to, to throw, um, units in there that's going to put pressure on the school system and all the other services that go along with regular multifamily housing may not be the right approach. And I'm like, I don't want to say outright that, you know, but, but it's like Mr. Boyle said, it's not cheating, it's just sort of playing with the rules.
And, and another, one, another point I'd like to make about the Whitney Field mall is that, the city's going to want to redevelop that as a, as a commercial, as a mixed commercial residential, you know, looking at it all together, the city is going to want to maintain a certain level of control. This is multifamily housing by right in the MBTA law.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is, that's a complex issue, there's lots of different uses, it could even be light industrial uses in that someday. Um, you know, right now we have a taxpayer there, thankfully, still, but I don't think we're going to mix those two together. We're asking for trouble.
Mr. Boyle, do you still have some left to your presentation?
Uh, no, we had, no, we had gone, we had basically finished the presentation. My text slide ironically enough was, are there any questions? So we, we had gone back to the map to talk about-
I'm sorry, Mr. Boyle, this gentleman's had his hand up for a few minutes.
Question. We have to allow for so many multi-unit housing. So if our zoning for some of the residents B or residence C was relaxed to allow it by rights, say with an accessory dwelling unit, would that take up a certain requirement? Like if you-
I was with you until you mentioned the accessory dwelling.
Well, so like the other requirements, if you allowed that by right in a larger area or in another zone, does that take up some of the requirements of needing?
Simply allowing EDUs wouldn't. You have to allow multifamily housing by right. Evidence of-
So if you had a 40% within the half mile of the train station, could your other 60% be achieved by just changing the existing zoning to allow the accessory dwelling?
Not just by allowing accessory units, you have to allow the use multifamily housing by right. An accessory dwelling unit is one type of multifamily housing, but you have to allow the other types.
If you allowed that, you know, the 40% that you required within, it's like, is there any way of giving them what they need within a half mile and then changing the zoning or something like that?
Yeah, accessory units are usually associated in a single family zone. That's a whole can of worms, another can of worms.
The answer to the first part of your question is yes. You, we, many, some communities have met their MBTA requirements just by taking one of their existing zoning districts and making minor changes to the regulations in there. I think that's how Pittsburgh got there. Um, it was, it was a relatively small change. But the answer to the second half of your question, can you meet part of your requirement just by allowing EDUs? I'm afraid not. You have to allow the use multifamily apartment.
If it's a housing unit though, an EDU is a unit.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't, unless the lots were really small, you know, 15 units per acre or two units per 4,000 square feet, whatever it now works out to be.
But the requirement isn't to allow accessory dwelling units. The requirement is to allow multifamily housing at a density of 15 units per acre. That, that land use needs to be allowed somewhere.
How many would you think need to be put in that area, in that, that district that you guys are proposing, buying for this, this zoning, for the, to fit the state's guidelines for the city to get this right?
Well, um, to take your, to, the question very strictly, not a single unit has to be put in there. Nothing has to be built for Leominster to meet its requirements, you just have to change the zoning. And if all of the developers in the world decide they hate Leominster, and even though they're allowed to build multifamily, they never build another, they never build a residential unit in this overly district, you've done your part.
Just by allowing it to be zoned for the-
To allow the use, yes.
And it doesn't guarantee us the grants, it just means it won't take away.
Right.
It doesn't mean that, again, so they just want to, we need that, we need that.
It's very tough to count the holders, they reject the town. They don't want the MBTA telling them what to do, because their, their, everything would happen here. Even if there's no say words, it becomes a plea.
Yeah, the town of Milton, they, and they, the reason they're doing it with Milton and not Warren is because Milton is, uh, their due date already arrived. The due, the, the due dates, so to speak, for, uh, differ by the type of community, and they are called a rapid transit community, the same as the ones that are on the subway, and so they were already supposed to have passed their law.
He said Holden.
Yeah, whereas Holden, they're a neighboring small town, and they don't have to pass their law until end this year, they do next year.
25.
25. A neighboring small town like that, their due date isn't until 25. And so the Attorney General can't sue you for violating the law until you violated the law. Milton has violated the law. Holden has announced their intention to violate the law, but they won't actually be in violation until the end of next year. The Milton case is scheduled to go to trial for October. I, after the last couple of years, I have given up making predictions of what judges are going to do. I, um, but based on that timing, the cities that have, that have their due date by the end of this year can't wait to see how that turns out and then act. You have to at least have something ready to go and act on, in case-
Got to be ready.
Yeah, yeah.
Got to be ready.
Got to, got to be ready to pass this. Um, you know, because we can't start waiting until that, until the case goes the wrong way.
Holden got sued civilly by private parties, housing advocates, and it was the Superior Court, and they won that case. The judge there ruled that the private parties didn't have standing to enforce the law. But that doesn't have anything to do with Attorney General bringing this on behalf of the Commonwealth.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to know who voted this, there was an act at first, who wrote this act into law?
The state legislature, the House of Representatives and the Senate, and then it was signed by the governor. This is state law.
Three lines.
Okay, a question please. So you, with all the number of units, how much are you talking, you take more population for the city ones? The reason I'm bringing that up, like, so right now, the population of Leominster, I believe they say it was 43, 30. Okay, so you had population of other people, are we going to build more shopping centers? Because I don't know if you've been to Market Basket on a Sunday, but you're going to be there forever.
Well, that's what Joe's talking about, if you build the housing, there'll be a body that can support a commercial business, you know what I mean?
I think, I think- I think, I think-
It's an egg in a chicken thing.
I think it would increase, yeah, I think it would increase commercial development in this city. The vision that, based on what we were working with, with the Housing Committee, was talking about Main Street, and commercial on Main Street there. We think it will be, you'll see growth, commercial growth, right there in the vicinity of Main Street. Through the redevelopment of the commercial properties already there.
You mean, through the, of the, of the properties that are, so, once these people are allowed in, who has control after the MBTA gets the rezoning they want? Can't they come and just build what they want there, or do I have to property to build what they want there?
Well, it'll be with land, that's zoned to allow certain things, and property owners and/or developers can come in and, I mean, it's just like all of the others, I mean. They can apply for permits if permits are required, they can apply for building permits if there aren't special permits required.
I think it's hard for Ward, the people of Ward One to sort of, this is sort of a big deal, I think, for us in Ward One. I mean, we're sort of a private end of town, we have a certain culture, I think, and this is, it's a big deal for us, I think, to understand and to accept that we have to do something like this.
Tough to think that possible, tells us what to do.
Yes, and they do that very frequently.
All right, I think it's almost time to make a claim, Legal Affairs meeting.
So, in terms of process, this was, this language and maps as drawn up, where are the petition that was submitted now to the City Council? The City Council sent it to your subcommittee. Now, your subcommittee has, has some thoughts. How does the City Council process work?
Well, as committee chair, we, I go to the other members, but I'm usually asked to make a recommendation before, so my recommendation at this point is going to have to defer the time, we have a continuation with a public hearing on June-
June 14th?
June 10th at 6:00 PM.
Your body or the planning board?
Pardon me?
Your body or the planning board?
The City Council, this way. So, I mean, I don't feel comfortable right now, certainly recommending any of these parcels or combinations there, to my committee, that we would go back to the, the whole City Council on 10th of June and tell them, "We got a great recommendation, we think you should include these three or four parcels and vote to approve it or to adopt the zoning." I'm not, I'm not anywhere near there yet. I think it's, I mean, I think perhaps that, I think maybe you folks were guided a little bit by the Housing Committee more than sort of we were aware of. Trying not to be as diplomatic as I can be, but I think some of what we heard tonight was the first time we've heard it. So I think, you know, we're going to need some time to chew on this. So, I do have the ability to schedule another subcommittee meeting at some point, which we probably, well, it will come after the June 10th meeting. And I know that puts us into the heat of summer and gives us, you know, a few months to wrap this up if we so decide to.
We're working all month.
Yeah. I'll be, I'll be working too, so. So, at this point, let me go to the other members in Legal Affairs, if I may.
Mr. Chair, it would be my suggestion, and I think at this juncture, we had some questions and perhaps some suggestions by Counselor Bedanza, of spreading this out a little bit, to spread out instead of just North Lemonster, to see if those other areas are feasible. So, it would be my request that we can follow through, perhaps on Counselor Bedanza's suggestion. We would, I would ask, and I'd ask the Chair, that we put that back on the table for our consideration. Basically, and we've heard from the people of North Lemonster here, if they're going to have to face the burden, why, why can we not distribute it out throughout the city? So I think that's an option that we would like to see looked into a little bit more and maybe to give us some different options, so that the burden will shift to more of the city rather than just in that one particular area, so.
So, Mr. Chair, we've been previously working back and forth with the Housing Committee, and our vision is that we will be working back and forth with the Legal Affairs Subcommittee at the City Council.
Yes. That's what we were asking for.
Just with specifics, say, for example, Mahogany Run, that's, looking at the GIS map, it's clearly, to me, looks like it's leasing by acres. It's fifty-two units of housing currently. So if that was part of it, that five-acre parcel would support some of this. For example, who's going to buy fifty-two units and tear them down, or tear some of them down to build, you know, potentially fifteen per acre, which, you know, it doesn't make economic sense. Which is the way, like you said, it's not cheating, but it's a recognition that we're meeting some of this requirement already. Which is the idea that I'm trying to get across to the Wood Run residents, is that if we do this, you know, some of it, we have, has to be close to the train station, there's no way around it, but if we can do it, do it a different way than the Housing Committee suggests, and start using some of this existing development to meet our quota, that's less units that gets built, which means less traffic, less impact, all the way around.
So, Mr. Chair, should we withdraw our petition?
Well, I wasn't aware that a petition was submitted until I mentioned a time.
Then how did it end up here? I thought it was sent here from the full council.
Oh, 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 I thought you meant that you sent a letter or something to them?
No. No, that, that letter was my cover letter today.
Oh, okay.
Here, we were reading.
Procedurally, I think we want to, we'll just further time to petition at the next council meeting. And if we go this other route, we're probably going to, scrapping that petition because it'll be too wildly different than-
I suspect so.
That's why we should just-
Withdraw now, so we can get the clock started again as soon as we can.
If you withdraw, we can't talk about it.
Right.
Oh, shoot.
So I think the action would be on the 28th, at the next meeting, would be further time, but if we could get something going, maybe you could work directly with the Chair of Legal Affairs and get some other model analyzed, which might win some approval downstairs.
Now, we're talking about taking districts out of the area near, near the train station. Now, what we were recommending near the train station are the Nashua Street MU1, the Hamilton Street MU1, this RB and this industrial. Based on the conversations with the Housing Committee and also based on our own professional analysis of it, we feel like this MU1 is the low-hanging fruit. This should very obviously be included. The one that has the train station in it needs to be the core of the district.
I agree, and also I think Mahogany, for example, is one, is contiguous to it, which actually helps.
Down here?
Yeah.
I heard, I feel like I've heard very clearly, you want the residents out, okay? That would probably moot the question of whether to include the industrial because of the contiguity issues. So, so this, so basically, we're, so that leaves the question of this MU1 up top. Are you at the point of that you are, of telling us, "Take that one out," the way you're telling us to take out the RB?
I would say, take, probably, but let's see what we can do for now. For now, take it out and see what we can do with these other disparate sites, and then if we can't get there, be the fight, you know, we have a limit, right? I think I heard it was five.
Five acres.
Yeah, how many can you put together? Is there a limit on that?
You can have as many sub-districts as you want.
There isn't a rule that says you can only have a maximum of four sub-districts, but other rules are going to, in practice, make it impossible to have it above a certain level.
All right, so we could always revisit that if we needed, if these other places need to get us there, right?
Yeah.
But for now, my personal opinion, speaking for myself, would be to take it out for now.
I assume that bottom MU1 will get a, still have us at that forty percent that we need to be at?
I don't know.
It looks like it should be.
That's kind of what I was-
It probably would with Mahogany.
There's Mahogany in it.
No, that's fifty, oh, oh, you're talking about within the district?
Yeah, the forty percent being within the half-mile.
This line is the half-mile.
Oh, so Mahogany will be outside.
Mahogany's down here?
Yeah.
So that, that would be outside.
So we have to go look at that MU1, and then a half, a half-mile, see if that makes the difference.
Right. Yes.
That's it, that's your criteria.
And then, and if not, we'll have to see if this MU1 plus this MU1 needs-
All right. You've got some work to do.
Yeah, yeah, but it's all work we can do.
Okay. Every community has its own thing.
Yes.
Let me ask you this, right? The effect to that MU1, Hamilton, across the street area, right? What would the main effect to that area be, whereas it's already built, already booked capacity? Like you're saying, just adding it, is it just space and rezoning? Or is it, like I said, is it going to be that huge property, like residential bunch of neighborhood where the property taxes and things become so high that people can't afford to live there?
That MU1 district has a limited amount of residential in it. It is, this is, this is Crawford Street, okay? So, the airport row, the industrial businesses on Airport Row, the industrial businesses on Hamilton, we have the geodesic dome, auto repair, okay? That's, that's what we're talking about up there. I think, I think there are, there is a little bit of scattered residential in there, but it's not like, it's not like this or this.
No.
Correct. The major, and so, what is, what would be the effect of putting a multifamily overlay district on high-value built-out industrial property? This Crawford Street there, it's got pretty decent highway access, there are some, there are businesses there, because it's, it's a pretty good place to, for industry. Would that be appealing, would that be more appealing for, for a residential developer? Would the industrial businesses there want to sell out to the residential developers? Let's keep in mind, this isn't just a question about what the, about the value of the property itself. Industrial businesses carrying out operations that are making it much a profit. But low-value industrial, and then, this question is also going to change depending on the community, because of what residential property values are. So, a town closer in towards Boston that rezones on top of some industry might have, would have a higher chance of that industry being replaced by residential than a town that's further out where property values are lower. I can't, I can't stand here and confidently say, "No, it wouldn't be value, it wouldn't be worth it to any of them to sell their land to residential developers on Crawford Street."
Do you want to trade jobs for out?
No.
No.
I mean, I'm pretty intimately familiar with that area, there's some parcels that could-
Might.
Might, but this, most of the developed parcels are not, they're factories or a commercial, highly valuable commercial property.
Right.
I mean, I think if we need to get there using that, there's a possibility we could work something that might make sense.
Some of Nashua Street's industrial properties are, it's like construction yard, it's not particularly high-value, and it's not, you're, two hundred industrial workers that are earning a living there. So those would be more likely to be overdone. All right, all right, so.
He says, like, you're a area where timber poses, because it's not so close up, it's just a section of space, so it's not actually going to work with the MU1, MU2, plus the industrial area, you do with a typical, like, a half-mile, and then this checker add.
What's that, the last part?
In other words, you take what's in MU1 and you do-
They're both MU1s. Yeah.
Oh, MU1, I'm sorry. Okay, and put the industrial in area in there, and then look at the non-quantitative which is Mahogany Run, and see if that'd be true.
We've got options, we can get back to you with the-
All right. Thank you all for coming.
All right, we should make this official, right?
Yes.
The motion, recommendation, Legal Affairs is going to be, further time, keep this public hearing open, and going to ask that we can explore, using this as sort of our core, we're going to use some of Counselor Bedanza's recommendations, and see how feasible it is, because we have a contiguous issue, right? And we have, and we don't-
Yes.
We don't have to talk ahead, know what that is, but we're going, you and I perhaps can continue this discussion when we know that, and we'll have the list of the potential other sites that we'd like to examine. How's that?
Yes, that sounds, that sounds good.
All right. Let me take, Emily, let me go to the other members, Counselor Tossi.
Can we close the train station?
Yes. Okay. You agree?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, you're in agreement as well?
Okay.
So it'll be the recommendation, then unanimous recommendation, it'll be give this forty-five, twenty-four, further time, keep the public hearing open, and meantime, we will work, or I will be liaison, and we'll see if we can have something else to chew on for our June 10th meeting.
So should I, should I just be with my contact person now and going back and forth with?
I think that's a good idea.
We've been, we've been dealing with Elizabeth, and she's been setting everything up.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Keep her in the loop as well.
Yes, okay.
That's fine.
Or not the Housing Committee.
And what was your name?
At some point, if we do get, if we do get this to a place where we're, where, you know, think we're going to pass it, we're going to ask for recommendations from, you know, planning, housing, so, you know, we're going to get feedback before it goes to a real estate market. But I knew this would be challenging, it's a, it's a very dynamic issue, it's emotional for feedback.
Do you think at the June 10th meeting, you should invite other boards that may be objective? Not objective, I mean, that would object to this and have more questions than we go back and do more, like, I want everybody that's pertinent to see it all at the same time and like, ask the questions and make a decision.
It's everybody in the town at first.
I know, like-
I was hoping that we had, we had it refined or planned, then we could invite part of the town and say, "What kind of impact?" Because otherwise, we're going to be asking them about impacts all over the place, and you don't have to define overlay district, right? I mean, in essence, the majority of the options we were given are in that core area, right? Because we have no choice, that's at least forty percent within a half-mile radius. So, whatever we decide, if we go to Hamilton Street, if we go the MU1 on Nashua, we're still in that same area, so, you know, the water availability, sewer availability, that will all be that same basic envelope, so.
Sounds good.
All right.
Okay.
So, I'm going to, once there's anything, anything else, any questions? Sure.
I thought maybe take a little piece of the pie.
I'm sorry.
Take a little piece of the pie, and then we can go to the university or Harvard, where most people in Lemonster would have their questions. It's not very, you know.
Well, we'll take that under advisement. All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to make a motion to, oh, so, do we have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Second? Oh, all right, hold the favor. Hey. Richard?
Thank you.
It's only two of us.
Thank you.
So you just got to write down the time you need to leave.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
They're just.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
You remember me?
Yes, I do.